Okay, let's go to item H.
Item H is review approval and ratification of the 2003 plat adoption for the crossings at Willow Creek Residential.
Mayor members of council, this is an item that is requesting a review by the council on approval and ratification of a plat that was recorded a long time ago on the 20th of November in 2003, referred to as the crossings at Willow Creek Residential Plat. We've included in the packet a short summary of the pertinent events. There are many other communications that have happened over the last several years. Wanted to try to summarize it and make it understandable as much as we can. You have in the packet final plat number one, which was approved by the council in November of 2002. And that particular plat was not recorded. You have final plat number two, which was the actual recorded plat that was recorded by the city on 11/20/2003. That plat wasn't, you know, as far as we can find from the record, wasn't approved by the council as an amended final plat. The plat was signed off by the then mayor, by the city engineer, and by the public works director, excuse me, the planning director at the time. There are slight differences, or some differences between the two plats. Significantly, the covered bridge site on Clearwater Drive was added as a second private segment. The public access easements were dedicated over the low water crossings and the covered bridge. Private street sections were also dedicated for public access easements. Those particular access dedications were signed off by the then developer-owner through the trust. So that is, they signed off on that plat, and that plat was then recorded. As indicated in the council communication, approximately 79 lots have been sold in reliance upon that recorded plat. Some property owners in the subdivision approached the city to discuss making that a private roadway because of the concerns that the city had in terms of Sandretto Hills. The city did not approve that or did not go forward making that a private roadway because of the importance of the secondary access in Sandretto. Last winter, excuse me, 2008, 2009, the issue came up again as far as the low water crossings, specifically in terms of issues that were raised by the homeowners association with regard to safety. We've taken some interim steps about a month and a half ago or so in terms of getting a license agreement where the city basically covers liability. That's a first step to deal with that issue. We've got a maintenance and operating agreement in place at this time. The request that we have to resolve some of the issues that are floating around, to the extent that there was an administrative error in the recordation of the plat, which has been argued and submitted by a number of council, a number of property owners in order to clear up the plat issues, this is a recommended course of action to ratify that, clearly indicating the intent of the council to approve the 2003 plat. There are some other steps which we anticipate taking at a later point in time once this is done. Most importantly, submitting a revised plat that will deal with the low water crossing and propose that the council accept that low water crossing consistent with other low water crossings. That's certainly a later step that the council's going to be facing in a revised subdivision plat. But right now, we're dealing not with that issue, but with the amended plat and requesting that the council ratified the approval of that plat. With that, I'll answer any questions council has.
Okay, Tammy Lynn?
Quick question. My understanding is that, that this plat and any other plat in this situation that had changed didn't have to come before council. And so you're bringing it forward basically to ratify the decision that didn't even have to come to council in 2003? Or was it supposed to come to council then?
Well, it's a good question. None of us were around in 2003, and exactly what happened back then, it's, you know, hard if not impossible to fully reconstruct that. There are parts of, you know, we're under, operating under what's called the new LDC or New Land Use Development Code. In 2002, there was a separate code, and there were provisions of that code that allowed acceptance of certain kinds of modifications in the plat administratively. That may have been what was done back then. There is some language in the code that suggests that that can be done, whether these are modifications that fall within that is an issue that, you know, can be argued both ways. That may have been what happened back in 2002, so they may have felt they didn't need to go back to council with those modifications. Whatever the reasoning is, they never did actually go back to council. So ratifying this particular plat, you know, at least addresses the issue administratively whether that had to be done or not. Yeah, it's just a, you know, it's just one way to solve that issue if there really is an issue. There are other issues on plat dedication. For example, when, when a plat is dedicated, property is dedicated to the public in a plat signed off by the then owner, there are different issues as to the dedication, whether that is a common law dedication, whether that has been validly dedicated apart from the subdivision plat being filed. And then the next thing is when lots are sold in reliance upon a recorded plat, whether or not the dedication may be valid just because of that particular legal reason. Those are all legal issues that pertain to the recording of the plat that has, and notice to the owners when they buy it, that that is the condition that they're buying under. Those, those things were all present when the plat was recorded.
Thank you.
Counsel? Comments from the audience?
I believe that, my name is Celeste Roberts. I am a resident of the crossings. I, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, did, did you require the crossings to take a vote to pass this ballot in order to come before you today? Because that's why I thought we did.
Did the city require them to do that?
Yeah.
I think that your, your own rules require you to do that with respect to common property. That would be a condition of what you would be doing.
Okay.
You know, and I think your attorney, the homeowner's attorney is present to answer that question. I think you have to in order to convey or in order to, to give, you know, basically board direction on what to do with property in common areas, you have to have a board vote. That's my understanding.
Okay. So is, another question, didn't really prepare for this, but did you, are you basing your ratification today on the fact that, that the homeowners association took a ballot vote on this, this issue to agree with the city basically on what this, this action is? Is that, if, if we had not taken the ballot vote in our HOA, would this be coming before you at this point? Or would you do this anyway?
You know, I can't speculate on, on that. If you hadn't done something, what would happen? The council has the power to ratify or to approve a subdivision plat. That's apart from anything that, that was done, because we're, we're talking about 2003 now. It certainly is helpful if there is a comment by the homeowners in the area and specifically by the board in terms of whether or not the ratification is something that is acceptable to the homeowners that are in charge of the property.
Okay, because, the reason I'm here is because we were led to believe as homeowners that we had to take a vote on this, this measure in order for you to be able to do what you're doing today and vote on this ratification. It sounds like that's not necessarily true. And so maybe that changes the reason I'm here today, because I'm here to, to challenge how that vote was done in our HOA and make you aware that there's a little bit of magic going on with our HOA board who actually took what was supposed to be a single day, July 15th, where the ballot was supposed to be given, and they magically transformed that single day and over a two-week period of time extended the meeting and ended it on July 26th in order to get the 75% ballot vote that was required, or so we were told for this. So I wanted to make you aware that if you believe in magic, it took magic to get this vote to you today. What I am, am asking, whether or not this is, is applicable, I'm not sure, based on what I've heard today, is that you send it back to the board and say, you know, you need to do this legally, because I don't believe they did it legally. There was a, a challenge to, there was a law that was quoted to them basically saying if this HB 2154, and passed in 2005, says that the ballot for an HOA is valid only for one specified meeting or election and expires after that date of the meeting. And so we went a little bit roundabout trying to figure out how they say July 15th could be extended two weeks and end on July 26th when they actually, so they were able to, in the meantime, two-week period of time, twist enough arms to get two more votes to pass it. And so that's why I'm here today. I just wanted to say this was not done. It was done in a way that invites a legal challenge as far as our board is concerned, and I think it needs to be redone in order to take away any opportunity for legal challenge. We have enough challenges in our subdivision as it is, so that's all I have to say.
Just a question, am I assuming you voted no?
I did not vote at all, because a vote, I abstained from voting because they needed a quorum of 50, 41 votes, I believe, to establish quorum. And so I thought, well, I'm not going to help establish that quorum by my vote, so I did not vote.
Okay, but are you here today with an opinion?
My opinion, well, my opinion is that this is the wrong direction to take with the council, that we, we have been told that all it needs to really happen is to go to a judge and say which plat is legal, determine the legality of the plat, and at that point we can go forward. But it seems like we're doing these gymnastics legally in order to accomplish several tasks at once, and that is mainly this measure today is accomplishing, giving away a section of property that currently is private to the city, and our board has managed enough, you know, votes, as I said, to, you know, get this, this through. They want to get it given away to the city without compensation to homeowners. And so, you know, this is, this is a simple way, it benefits the city, absolutely, but I believe it invites a lot of legal challenges, and I think it's the wrong order of doing things. We simply should be going to a judge and saying, tell us which, which plat's correct first, and then from there, we can negotiate. If we want to give away a piece of land, that's fine, we can negotiate it at that point. But right now, we're trying to accomplish four different items with this one, one action, and I don't believe that's the right thing to do. So that's my opinion.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I don't understand how, how does this benefit the city?
It gives them a piece of land that wasn't-
Do you want to take liability for it?
Liability, yeah.
To take liability, and-
So does that benefit us?
Well, as, as I think Mr. Blair had stated in the previous meeting, that that road was never meant to be anything but a connector-collector. So does that benefit the city? Eventually, it could. At the current time, I don't know. But if that's a connector-collector, any of you, can you tell me what another connector-collector is in the city? I think Ross or Gail Gardner are comparable, and this is a little private community. Seems a little odd to have a connector-collector going through, pretty much out of the way. It's not a, it's not a straight shot, you know, to Willow Creek Road by any means, so to, I don't know what the future plans would be for that road. But for us to give that to the city and condone the amount of traffic, we already have 1,000 cars a day that have been registered going through there, and the lots are only 25% filled. So that seems an inordinate amount of traffic to be going through a neighborhood such as that.
Mark, have you done a traffic study? She said there's 1,000 cars a day going down that road.
I can't tell you that we have counted the cars out there recently. I, I don't have a number.
Yeah.
Okay, because that seems like a lot when you look at some of the other roads that we're looking at that are not, that are much more used. So I'd love to see some statistics on that, whether this goes through or not.
Ian Mattingly could help you with that.
Oh, does he, did Ian do a study?
He did a study, yes.
Well, that's his boss, so.
And that was a couple of years ago, actually. So this is, you know, it's an old study, actually.
I'll get the information. I just don't have it with me.
Okay, not a problem. I'm sorry to catch you off guard.
Thank you for your time.
Gary, I got a question for you. Does this, does it make any difference on whether we ratify this today or not, whether their home, the HOA voted on it or not?
You know, that it, it does to the extent that their rules require them to comment on this, and it would be helpful to eliminate one legal issue if the homeowners association that is in charge of the common area favors the ratification of the plat first, and then secondarily, we go through, and obviously, when we go through an amended plat, we need to have their, you know, the homeowner's consent in order to deal with that property and take over the low water crossing. The only way we can actually do that in an amended plat is if the person who owns the property or is in charge of that property on behalf of the other property owners signs off on the last plat. So, you know, we looked at this process as being something that we wanted to get everybody involved in, wanted the homeowners group to comment on, and wanted to try to see what their position was before we move forward on it. Does it, does it totally impact us from, from just deciding the plat is what we wanted to do? It was dedicated validly by the developer, and we're going to ratify that? No. But their consent does help eliminate a legal issue, which is that, that the homeowners group itself did not approve or did not want us to go forward. It's certainly better to go forward with cooperation, in my view.
From my understanding, I thought we had that. I thought we had their approval, but apparently it wasn't.
And I can't, I can't address some of the homeowners nuances that happened, because I wasn't involved in that.
Jim, you were to a question before.
I'm sorry, I'll let the gentleman go first.
Go ahead.
Jim Atkinson, 1550 Plaza West Drive. I'm the attorney for the association. I'd like to explain what that vote was about. Actually, they were, the members of the association were voting on four different things at that meeting that commenced on the 15th. First one was whether or not they were in favor of what you're considering doing today, refiling or ratifying and re-recording the 2003 plat. The members had to vote by, approval of that required a majority of those voting. We had, even if the position that was taken by Ms. Roberts is correct, at the meeting on the 15th, that commenced on the 15th, we had 60 ballots that we received from the members of the association. There are 79 lots, so we had 60 out of 79 people give us ballots voting on that issue. Out of those 60 ballots, 58 voted in favor of what you are considering doing today. The second issue that was being voted on was whether or not the replat that, that Mr. Kidd referred to earlier would be approved by the members. The replat and the dedication of the low water crossing, the bridge deck, and some center islands, that also required a majority of those voting to approve it, for it to pass. Again, 60 ballots, 58 in favor, two against. Where the issue comes up-
I'm sure, I don't mean to interrupt, but-
Sure, go ahead.
Just a quick, and this all took place on the 15th?
Yes, yes. Then where the issue came up, in order to actually accomplish the dedication of those areas that we spoke of as part of the replat, we have to amend the CCNRs of the, of the association. In order to do that, we need 75% of the members of the association either to vote in favor of that or to give us a written approval of that, approving, approving the amendments that we need to accomplish to, to do that dedication. That's a separate issue now, something we definitely want to do, but the, we are talking with the people that objected, the members that objected to our continued meeting, but that issue is not in any way related to what you're looking at today. The third issue, or excuse me, the fourth issue, was that under our documents, we have to approve a change of use in the event we're changing how common areas are used. Since the low water crossing is a common area, we had to have 65% of those voting to approve that change, and again, it was 60, or 58 for, two against. So we certainly met that 65% requirement. So that's how the voting was going. That's what, the issue is whether or not they feel we had the right to extend the meeting to the 26th. We feel we did, but we're talking about that and we will resolve that. I just wanted you to be aware that as far as the vote on the issue you're considering today, it was, I think, 96 of the, of the people, 96% of the people that voted, voted in favor of what you're considering doing today. And that was 76%, of all the lots. Okay?
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question for attorney, and I've been trying to figure this out since we were here last time. Does ratification of this plat, second proposed plat, plat that somebody didn't ratify or whatever, does that redirect the liability on something that we don't have right now? For example, I asked this question last time we were sitting here. Right now, if I, if I understand it correctly, the private homeowners association has the liability, what takes place on that low water cross, crossing? That's their private property, that doesn't belong to the city. Is that a correct statement?
It doesn't belong to the city, but the recorded plat indicates it's a public right of access. Same with the bridge. Does this specific action redirect liability? No. The action that was taken about a month and a half ago allows us, you know, basically, we took over liability for the low water crossing for its operation and maintenance.
That was a temporary taking it over, if I'm not mistaken.
Temporarily, yeah. Yeah, this particular plat essentially ratifies the plat that was recorded by the city in 2003, which provides for public, a right of public ingress and egress going through the low water crossing and also across the bridge area. Those are the two main points, main differences.
So my question still comes in, the temporary deal goes away, okay? That's out of the picture. Now you're sitting here with this, this, this bridge or low water crossing or whatever you want to call it over there. Who has the liability of managing that piece of property?
If, if, if the, if the revised plat does not go through, the homeowners would have the same responsibility they do under the current plat, the currently recorded plat. If this, if this approval ratification, you're just simply authorizing or okaying any administrative issues on the, on the, on the plat that has already been recorded. The, the second issue that you talked about would be the amended plat, which is whether or not the council approves the amended plat and takes over that low water crossing and some of the liability related to that issue. So that's another step in the future, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Well, yeah, it is, so it's another one in the future. What is, okay. I guess my question is right now, what's the advantage to the city of managing that low water crossing with the liability of managing the low water crossing? I mean, what is the advantage to the city?
You know, this has been going up for about a year, year and a half. The advantage to the city in taking over that low water crossing is just to manage it consistently with all the other ones the city takes and maintains, and it's a policy issue. Part of it was working with the homeowners association and trying to resolve some of their concerns, the safety and liability issue. And really, you know, one of the only ways we can actually get involved in that and accept that liability on the fee title is if we go through the amended plat, and that was their big concern. You know, they were feeling that, you know, they couldn't close off the roadway because it was required to be a public access going all the way through there. They weren't able to do that, and yet water was going across there, and they were concerned about if someone were to drown or there would be, to be an accident, they would assume the liability. So part of the process is whether or not, you know, by us taking that over and maintaining that, they, they do get out of the liability on that. It resolves kind of a contested issue that they've had for some time.
All right, so that gets me to, 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 to one, one level. If I'm not mistaken, during the process, you, you had one plat and you had second plat. One plat went one way, second plat got done a different way. However, regardless of one plat and the other plat, the road was intended, I wasn't here in 2003 for number one or number two, okay? And that's sort of the way I feel about them, you know? What I can tell you is that now, now we're faced with an issue, we have a public road over there someplace with something that could be obstructive in the middle. Is that what I'm hearing? And that's called that low water crossing that the city's not responsible for, somebody else's responsible for. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, right, right now, as it stands with the recorded plat, they're responsible for that because the other plat was never recorded, so there is no other recorded plat. The only thing that makes us responsible at this point is we've agreed to take over the operation and maintenance by a temporary agreement.
Is there any other portion of that road that's in that same scenario? Or is the rest of that road subject to the city?
I think that, I think just the bridge is subject to the same conditions that the low water crossings are under the recorded plat.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you explaining that.
I just, oh, one thing that Mr. Atkinson, Atkinson left out, the ballot process, it was stated on our ballot that if all four measures did not pass, then none of them would pass. And so it didn't get the required 75% on July 15th in order for all of four of those to pass. Therefore, none of them should pass. That is, that is the issue that I had. They changed the rules of the ballot after the balloting process was complete, and I don't want a legal challenge to it. If they're going to get a ballot, then, then they need to do it the right way and, and do it above board so that we don't have to worry as homeowners that it's going to be legally challenged, and I'm sure it will be. So that's what I have to say. As far as that low water crossing and some insight that I know, as a member, as one of the co-chairs of the Traffic Calming Committee, is the issue we faced was because of the private nature of that low water crossing, yes, we have the liability as homeowners. The ironic thing is that the city would not allow us to have control over the gating, and so therefore, we could not protect the public from the, the issues. That's what this is about. It's about control. And the city, yeah, they'll give us all the liability, but none of the control, and that is, that is exactly what the problem has been. We believe that, well, the section of road was put there as a protective measure for us against the traffic, and we should be able to close it, gate it as we need to when the conditions prohibit traffic from going through there. And that has been up to three months out of the year that that road is impassable. So to have the idea that, that road was never built to specifications, as was stipulated in the notes that we got for the council meeting that approved that 2002 plat, therefore, the road would have to be improved. And it's a, the lowest of the low water crossings in, in the city. Therefore, you know, we can't protect anybody at this point. So, thank you.
How many low water crossings do we have in the city? I know we have a lot. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm bringing all these questions.
Go ahead and ask your questions. I'll wait.
No, that's all right. You're probably not per-
My name is Debra Sellers. I live at 595 Robin Drive in the crossings. As Celeste told you, the one thing that Jim Musgrove neglected to mention when he made his statement to you was that although three, the first three of the four measures passed on the vote that was legal on July 15th, the fourth vote could not pass because they didn't have enough votes, which meant that, and we were repeatedly told this by Mr. Atkinson in an earlier board meeting, that that meant all four issues would fail. They illegally extended the meeting for two more weeks and then went out and flagrantly garnered additional votes. So yes, there will be a challenge to it. The other thing is, what nobody has mentioned today is that in the public report, which is what people have to rely on when they buy dirt, and all the original purchasers of lots in the crossings bought dirt because there wasn't anything there in the beginning, the original public report showed only one way in and one way out of the crossings, and that was Clearwater Drive going up to the crossings' commercial development. And the actual low water crossing itself was private and to be maintained by the owners of the 79 lots in the crossings. Everybody that bought their lots in the crossings knew that they were going to be responsible for the maintenance of the low water crossing. It obviously didn't stop anybody from buying their lot because there are no lots that were, remained unsold. There are a lot of lots for sale in there right now, but they're, they're extra sales. Somebody's bought the lot, they've turned it over maybe, or they're trying to turn it over. Some of the lots in there have been turned over several times. So I'd just like to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marlin City Council members, my name is John Sellers. That was my wife. I apologize for interrupting her. I had a legal reason for that. I just want to take issue with one point that Gary made. I think probably most of you know, and I'm sure Liz Burke does. There's been a lot of public record searches. There's over 1,400 documents that I went through at the behest of the board. Part of those documents are the old land development code and the land development code that was adopted in 2003. I think if you check, you'll find that both of them, when there's an abandonment or a dedication of a public street, it always must, always must come before the public body. It's a basic principle. The reason I was correcting my wife is that there will be a challenge to the ballot. It'd be filed in Superior Court tomorrow, so I'm not going to say much more about that. Except to say, if it, if it does succeed, to get to Councilman Hammond's question, if this does succeed, any vote that you might take today, we believe would prove to be an expropriation of property under Proposition 207. The issue for us is, we paid $1 million cash for our house. Because of the so-called administrative error that Gary described, we've been declined three times by well-known, well-known national reverse mortgage lenders until, as Juan called it, this sticky title mess has been cleaned up. And that's not without some creative attempts on my part as a banker to get a mortgage commitment with opinions of Phoenix law firms, and we couldn't do it. This administrative error, in reality, is a carefully orchestrated series of events with the masterminds being the developer Ty Myers and city officials at the time, some of whom are sitting in this room. We believe that ratifying the 2003 plat means granting them amnesty, which we don't believe you can do. Furthermore, legal research strongly suggests that even if the 2003 plat had been properly approved, it would have still been illegal because of its form, because of the splitting of the, of the right of way and the ownership of the land. If that's true, the, the city could end up owning the crossings. That's basically my analysis. The good news is you won't need voter approval because it's not quite $40 million. It's something less than that. I've seen white collar crime, and don't jump to conclusions easily. Steve Blair alleged criminality on the part of Craig McConnell, who I think is sitting behind me, and Ty Myers to be in Murphy's Bar in July 2009. Despite his allegations, my sworn affidavit a few weeks later still reflected what I thought was the hard evidence and the facts where I said, this is sworn affidavit, "My strong suspicion without knowing all the facts and for the avoidance of doubt only with respect to paid public officials is this was simple disorganized ineptitude on the part of the city compounded by some very poor legal advice. I have no evidence or belief that paid officials' actions merit an FBI or other criminal investigation." That changed dramatically with evidence later supplied unasked by city staff. This showed that Ty Myers had applied for abandonment of Lorraine Drive in his commercial subdivision in early 2002. The unlawful plat, together with this abandonment, constitutes a swap of the traditional neighborhood road through road through his commercial subdivision into our residential one. Now, here's an analogy which might help. Say city council approved plans for Rossa Road, but with a private gate in the middle, closing it to through traffic. People then buy lots based on this. But behind closed doors, the developer and the city delete the gate in the plat when recorded, and Rossa becomes a main thoroughfare. Oh, and by the way, imagine 75% of the residents, when uncovering this a few years later, no problem, forget the gate, give it to the city for free. We don't mind living behind a highway. That was the vote that was described earlier. Mr. Musgrove, I'm sorry, my wife did get Mr. Musgrove and Atkinson. We get them confused regularly. Stood here on April 27th last and said, "There's been too much made of this whole situation because nobody has sat down and looked at it as a whole." Well, that's not true. Because Eric English, a young attorney with his firm, had done just that seven days earlier. He'd sent his excellent legal analysis on April 23rd to our title insurer. His description of the administrative error is as follows, quotes, "The developer in conjunction with the mayor, city engineer, and planning director circumvented the final plat approval process by failing to satisfy the requirement in Section 9109 of the new land code." He then adds, "The developer and city of Prescott are liable if title fails due to an invalid plat. The developer had a duty to ensure the plat was properly approved by the city, city, city council and the city of Prescott incorrectly approved the plat." In closing, he says, he writes a very good memo, "Jim, you are the strategist on this one, and I think we already decided our best course of action would be to go after the city and let the city pursue the developer." Now, the interesting bit is, on seeing this, our title company immediately emailed Musgrove, but not us, because we didn't get the memo until recently, saying, quotes, "I think we can all agree that the effects of a court-ordered invalidation of the 2003 plat may have some disastrous consequences for everyone." Ironically, the same title company with a claim outstanding emailed us the same day saying, "I've attached a preliminary report for a loan policy which does not disclose this as a title issue. I don't see any reason why an appraisal would pick this up as a title issue. I see no obstacle to refinancing or selling for that matter." So my questions to you are, one, will this plat be approved by a judge with a declaratory action? Because that was a condition of the special vote. And two, who's actually opining on the legality of all this? If it were Eric English, by the way, who writes a very good memo, I might rely on that because he strikes me as a very good attorney, but his opinion was not given to us. He actually put his legal reasoning on paper. Marlin, he might even make a Rhodes Scholar. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. To the extent there is a, a legal action pending on the ballot, obviously I won't get into that, but we have not yet retained counsel to act on the title issue. So to the extent I cannot be willing to answer any questions. Thank you.
Comment, counsel?
Yeah, I do. I, I can't sit here.
Let, let me go first, Steve. Mr. Sellers, I am disappointed you didn't read your, whatever we want to call it, that you forwarded to everybody that I guess has an email address. Very disappointed, and, and we met some time back, and I had a lot of confidence and enthusiasm at you as one of those guys that come to Prescott because you wanted to be here and want to be a part of our community and could offer your expertise and, and some help in, in some areas. And I also understood that you wanted to go in business here and that the city might potentially could be a customer of yours. Part that disappoints me is, is some of the acquisitions that you make, and I, I think without, without proper background or knowledge, to accuse people of being co-perpetrators, corruption in government, brazenly caught up in a cover-up, and then trying to remind us how Mr. Nixon got involved in a White House cover-up. You're asking that we're really being asked to grant amnesty? I, I, I just agree with these things. And I also disagree with the liberty that you took with he said, she said, I said. And there's some untruth there. But I realize sometimes that we want to make things we think as being truthful when it sometimes are not. I take issue that there was nothing that was classic bait and switch. And I also take issue that Mr. Gro, Mr. Musgrove lied to you. I, I don't believe in those things. And you've also made mention several times that Mr. Musgrove is my attorney. It's not true. One of his associates has done some work for me. But Jim Musgrove is not my attorney. But if I needed help, I certainly would not hesitate going to him because I think he is a fine attorney. So I don't know where we're going to end up with this. We've been accused twice today or told twice today that we're going to end up in court. So with, with that coming from you and, and the lady beside you that we're going to end up in court, I guess that's where we might as well go and, and let the show begin. But I hope we can move forward and not make the accusations about some, some very honest, hardworking people that, that have lived here for a long time and want to stay in this town, and I don't think any of us plan on leaving. I don't know what your plans are. Reverse mortgage usually means that a person wants to get some money out of something and, but without knowing what your intent is. I ju, I just, I, I don't want the community to think that what you're spouting out is, is all factual. And, and maybe the court is the right place to take this. So with that said, anybody have anything? Yes, you currently.
I didn't read the document out that you've just alluded to, Marlin.
No, I, I wish you would have because I think it's, it's, it is so close to being on libel, which we may want to pursue that.
Well, that's, you know, obviously everybody has their choice to do that.
Has made the public enough that it, it certainly proved what your intent was. So, you know, we can take that where you want to go with it, Jim.
Well, first of all, there's been no action filed against the city. And I did not say that, neither did my wife.
That's certainly your right.
Well, of course it is.
Now, realize I'm not an attorney.
No, but I don't think I ever.
And those are your famous words.
I don't think I ever said that we were filing an action against the city, unless I'm mistaken, and neither did my wife.
I, I, I think that's a right you have. You, you've, you've been threatening it long enough, but maybe it's the next.
That is a misperception. Can I just say?
Maybe it's the next thing to do, yeah.
Can, I, I'd like to go back to my questions. I didn't come here to engage in personal attacks, and I didn't. I think the record would show that.
I, I think this made it very personal.
I, that document is a different document, Marlin. I, I'll stand by the record on what was said today.
That's all of the record.
If anybody can get that, anything you've sent us is.
No, I understand that, but I did not read that out today.
This is, it, it has made wide distribution.
Then I did not do that. But I stand by what I say. Is there going to be a conditional, is there going to be declarative judgment? That's my question. I'm sorry you want to make it personal, Marlin. I wasn't, I wasn't intending to do that.
Anyone else have anything to say?
I do. I was here in 2003, and I just want to get clarification. I was also on Planning and Zoning Commission and followed the whole process all the way through. My understanding is only my mind and my own personal understanding of the issue in the first place. We start talking about Ty Myers and going back into the Dollar Mark Ranch and the development of what the crossings is. Lorraine Drive was traded back to the Crossings Drive based upon Ty Myers's commitment to the city to do commercial number one first in his development and number two, to participate in the light whenever warranted. Lorraine Drive was stipulated to be a problematic, and Mark, you were here, a problematic situation that had been washed out numerous times over the past year and was deemed to be unusable. And the trade-off was very clear. Then when it came up with Rocky Anacini through the development process of the crossings of not having a secondary access for the Sandretto Hill folks based upon the crossings being developed in the commercial properties, that Robin Drive was negotiated to be a full-blown thoroughfare to give second access not only to the crossings, but also to the people in Sandretto Hills and everybody on the other side of the creek. And I just want people to understand, regardless of what people have stood up here and made testimony about, that creek has been closed numerous times, yes, but without, for that secondary crossing on Robin Drive, you wouldn't have had it out. You would have been stuck. It was beneficial both ways. And when the conversation with Mr. Sellers and I had in Murphy's, trying to pin me to two different reports, and I did make the comment about Mr. McConnell. I was very clear with Mr. McConnell as well as the staff that if somebody did anything outside of the scope of being legal in the city of Prescott, that they should be fired and convicted. I made those comments. I stand behind those comments. Based upon a plat being drawn and the council approving a plat that also had footnotes on the plat, the city has a right to alter changes administratively. Yes, there was two plats, but only one was submitted for approval. That was the one with the new verbiage that clarified what was already footnoted on the original plat. That was ratified by the fact that we put the thing through the process through the county and then on to the state for ratification with the realtors. And that plat that was accepted as a legal plat was then the only plat that the sellers saw, not the sellers here, but the sellers that were purchasing property saw to be able to buy a piece of property. I find it very difficult, and I am not a lawyer, Marlin. I find it very difficult to understand from a very small-minded person that I am to understand when there's a legal plat that has been recorded within a year's timeframe, called out in the code of the city of Prescott, that that legal plat was recorded and that's what people bought properties under was under that legal plat. Am I missing anything? Am I wrong?
The plat that you're talking about, that is the only recorded plat. The 2000, you know, the 2003 plat, November 20th, 2003 plat, is the only recorded plat. And that is the plat that was recorded that people who later bought property from the developer owner at the time saw, and that has been the only recorded plat to this very moment.
And at this point, the reason why we're here today is in the wisdom of our new Public Works Director, which was Mr. McConnell at the time, and our past city attorney. Before that plat was submitted for ratification, the city thought, why should we take on the responsibility for these crossings? They give the city the liability, okay? So that was the fact that was on the footnote stating that those two areas would be homeowners association approval. Those were there. We're here today to say the city, if in fact it has become an issue with closing the gate, who operates the gate, and if it's a fact on clear title on the crossings property, we, the city, will modify the plat to make the city's responsibility and move forward. So I don't know what all the gibberish is about. As far as I'm concerned, it's to the point where I don't, I don't understand.
Excuse me. You had your bite at the apple. It's time for me to get the bush old apple boy. All right. Mr. Mayor, my name is Jim Musgrove. I'm at 1135 Iron Springs Road. One, I am not going to address the libelous and slanderous communications made by Mr. Sellers with regard to me, much less to the members of the council, on advice of those that I've consulted today regarding the communication of those statements. My main purpose for being here right now is to advise that you all are way off the track. You are not here today to discuss whether or not to assume the ownership, the liability or whatnot of the low water crossing on Robin Drive in the crossings subdivision. What you are here for today is a very simple administrative task, and that is to ratify and confirm the 2003 plat. The reason for that is that there has been a question as to whether or not the signing off by certain of the city of Prescott administrators, mayor, clerk, et cetera, was correct because there was a change in the dedication language from the 2002 plat as approved by council and that 2003 plat that was submitted for signature. and that 2003 plat that was submitted for signature. There is a question because of confusion within the land development code. But I think if you go back to the minutes of the 2002 meeting, council meeting, you will find that the corrections or the changes made in the dedication language on the 2003 plat as signed and recorded reflect 100% and absolutely the charges by the council to staff, attorneys, and more importantly, the planning and development staff, that the city want, did not want the ownership of the low water crossing, they didn't want that liability, but that the low water crossing was to be a public access. And that is the change. Now with regard to this other matters, whether or not Robin was part of the, supposed to be a gated or closed off, I don't know, I have nothing to do with that. I was hired simply to be sure that title is valid for the 79 lot owners out there. That is all. Now, with regard to the memorandum that Mr. Sellers seems so excited about, it's this. As a lawyer, I was hired to buy the title company to clear, be sure that the title of those properties were clear, that the homeowners would have no problem with the title of their property. Now, one of my jobs as, and I've been representing title companies since August of 19, excuse me, of 1980, represent six of them today, but part of what you do is you work out, "What if?" What if the Abopai Superior Court, in a challenge by somebody, determined that the plat was invalid? What would our position be? Our being the title company, because the title companies are going to write the checks. So what if? And so that memorandum was prepared on my instructions by an attorney working for me is, "What if the title fails and the title companies have to start writing checks? What do we do?" And that memorandum reflects what we would do. That would be my position, that the city screwed up if in fact the court found that the plat was not legal, was not a valid plat. So, I was told that if I got here by 4 o'clock, that we'd be at this matter. You undertook this matter at 5:35 PM, all right? You cut into some, you're getting close to my bedtime, but in any event, I ask you to stick to the subject at hand, which is, are you going to ratify the 2003 plat so that you can move on at another point to determine whether or not you're going to do a replat to take over the ownership of the low water crossing? And I don't care what you do on that.
Can I ask a question? With that said, Mr. Musgrove, thank you for your clarification, but representing, I assume you represent the title companies now, by us ratifying what's here today on our table, does that clear title for the properties in the crossing?
In my opinion, it will, but as I suggested to Gary Kidd and, or excuse me, Matt Prodecky and Jim Atkinson in December in a meeting in my office, ratify the plat by the city, and then let's take a declaratory judgment, Superior Court, and ask for it. I haven't pursued that because that judgment, that action should come from the city of Prescott. So you'll have to speak to Gary or Matt as to whether or not that's on their sheet as to whether or not they are going to advise you to file a declaratory judgment action. In view of what's been happening for the last many months, it would be my opinion that a declaratory judgment action be in the best interest of the city of Prescott, but more importantly, in the interest of the lot owners at the crossings. Thanks.
Thank you. One more bite at the apple, John.
Well, I will agree on Mr. Musgrove on one thing, that a declarative judgment would clear up the question. We would like to have clear title. Steve, the minutes, the taped minutes of the conversations in 2002 just don't bear out what you've said. I'm sorry, we have them, Liz was kind enough to go down and extract the tapes, and they're in minute form. The other thing is that the land code is very, very clear. It's unlawful to modify a plat where there's an abandonment or dedication of a street without going back to city council. Now, I hope Gary would agree with that. So abandoning or dedicating a public street requires city council approval. It can't be done quietly or privately.
Well, I admit, I let us get off, off of target, and I would agree that if we stick to the agenda.
Again, my question is whether the declarative judgment, on that point, I agree with Mr. Musgrove. Thank you, John.
So let's, let's move forward and stay with the agenda, and do we have a motion to approve and ratify the?
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Could I just make one clarification you alluded to? I have not threatened lawsuit. I simply was warning the board and people here that I was aware that the sellers were planning to find, or file on this, so don't misconstrue me as being in that position.
But that somebody's going to.
Exactly.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Ready for the motion.
Move to approve and ratify the 2003 plat adoption for the crossings at Willow Creek Residential.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, let's forward.
Motion passes unanimously.